Welcome all to our presentations. Mr. Duganey, we are ready to go.
Members of council, at this time we'll start with the continuation of our budget presentations and budget briefings. We'll be joined by the Honorable City Treasurer, Lee Henderson. She'll come and start the show off today, giving the council overview of her operating budget for fiscal year 25, 26. City Treasurer, your floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor is not here at the moment. Members of council, thanks for having me today. I'm going to try to be pretty quick today because the Treasurer's Office doesn't have any significant changes in our budget, but just to give you an overview and then talk about a couple of things that are going on in my office, that would be great. So, no change from last year for the full-time employees, seventy-six point six employees in the Treasurer's Office, a budget of eight point seven million dollars. The majority of our budget goes to salaries and fringe benefits, postage, printing, paper envelopes to get the bills out, IT-related expenses, and very minimal amount on other expenses in our office. So, we run a pretty tight ship. Our budget change from last year or this current fiscal year to next fiscal year is minimal, one point four two percent. And just to take a quick second to talk about some things that are going on in our office, statistic-wise, we're very busy. We processed two point four million payments last year in our five locations, including almost twenty thousand payments over the phone and one point three million in electronic payments, and we're seeing the trend go towards paying electronically. We answered one hundred and eighty-one thousand telephone calls last year and mailed out over a million correspondences, bills, notices, and whatnot. Right now, our online payments, we accept personal property, real estate, parking tickets, red light citations, school bus stop arm citations, school board invoices, faults alarms, fire department inspections, business license, trust taxes, police department FOIA bills. So, we're continually trying to look at what else we can put online to offer those services to the citizens. We work with just about every other city department in one way, shape, or form. We do billing and collections for real estate, personal property, trust taxes like meals, lodging, admissions, parking tickets, animal control disposal fees, impound fees, school board, like overdue lunch balances or accounts payable, stuff like textbooks, Chromebooks, red lights, school bus, stop arms, police department faults alarms, DUI cost recovery, traffic engineering like streetlight installation, fire inspections, fire permits, human services for FOIA requests, facilities management for rent leases, farmer's market rent, cell tower rent, public works for access basin dredging, animal licenses, court costs and fines, restitution with the courts and Commonwealth Attorney, housing and neighborhood preservation liens, human services and community services board, parks and rec, public utilities, risk management, sheriff's office. We deal with everyone. If there are any other departments that need assistance in their billing and collection tools, then please let them know that they're welcome to reach out the Treasurer's Office for us to facilitate for them. A couple of things that are going on in our office this year, May fourteenth and fifteenth, we're hosting our seventh annual unclaimed property event in conjunction with the Virginia Department of Treasury. In the past six years that we've held this event, we've been able to facilitate giving back about one and a half million dollars to taxpayers in Virginia Beach. And what this is, if you have an uncashed refund check or dormant bank account and whatnot, this program helps you search that database and they will help you to find and retrieve your money. The planning department is moving back to the municipal center at the beginning of May, so our office will also help them with that transition and continue to support their operations from our Building One location. Thank you for counsel for approving the grace period last cycle. This has been very helpful in our office. It gives an additional five days after the due date for personal property and real estate taxes for taxpayers to pay without penalty and interest. And when you're talking about real estate taxes, ten percent of a two thousand dollar bill is a chunk of money, and I think our taxpayers are, it's very helpful for them to help with hardships that are going on with them, but also the service delays that we see with the United States Postal Service. Which leads me into our e-billing initiative. Thank you, council, also for approving that CIP, and this is also to help with the postal service issues. We are looking at implementing this hopefully later on this year. It will give the ability for citizens to sign up to receive their bill electronically, and we can also planning to have text message reminders on this, so I hope that's very helpful. The last thing I'd like to mention is our enterprise assessment billing and collection modernization projects. This is where we are looking to modernize technology integration and the citizens' experience with the Treasurer, Commissioner, and Real Estate Office. So, technology is very, very important in our office to facilitate tax collection, but we work very closely with the Commissioner and the assessor as well. Next fiscal year, we're planning on upgrading our real estate system to the latest platform, and that's with the Real Estate Assessor's Office. This is going to be updating a program that we initially implemented in two thousand seven, so I think it's long overdue. And it's important that we have software that is secure for the information that we hold about our citizens, sustainable and technologically supported. So, we'll be looking at that as well for our personal property, business revenue, miscellaneous billing software for the future, and that will work with the Commissioner's Office and the integrations that we can help facilitate with our taxpayers. We also look to remediate a lot of our standalone programs that were written in an older programming language for the same reasons, just to make sure that everyone's data is secure and we're able to automate processes. And that is, that is all I have today. Promised I'd try to be real quick, but if anyone has any questions.
That was outstanding, man. We can't run a city without you or the Commissioner or Revenue. Let's put it this way, you're the lifeblood of government and do a fantastic job. Any questions for Lee? Okay, Michael and then Barbara.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I just want to compliment you and also your entire staff for the outstanding services you provide the city. Very grateful to all of you. The grace period was new and you touched upon that, but I wonder if you could go just a little bit further in terms of what the operational impact has been for that program for you and also the sort of utilization of it? Because I do think it's, you know, there's a lot, particularly in this economy and this environment, people are sometimes moving things around to get, you know, their bills paid, and that's understandable, and I think providing that grace period is something that we're all grateful to have been a part of, to provide that flexibility to the residents, and you certainly led that charge and were the visionary leader behind it. But I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit more about how it's being utilized and what the real-world impact of that, providing that grace period has been for people who you serve.
So, I don't think that citizens are fully aware of that. This adoption did not change the due date. The due date remains whatever, June fifth, for example. I think most citizens that come in after the due date are surprised and very excited that they don't have to pay that penalty and interest. We've only gone, we've done a few personal property supplements since this was adopted in one major real estate cycle, and I tried to do a little bit of analysis that I wasn't prepared to share details yet because I want to see a full year cycle to see what the financial impact was, but I'm estimating a little bit less than what I predicted, about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars of revenue that we would have received had we been charging the penalty and interest for that five-day period versus us not doing so. So, for the city, that's not a whole lot of money, but for individual taxpayers, it's a ton of money.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that you brought that to us, and I'm grateful for the relief that it provides to people who need it.
Thank you.
Barbara.
There's just something I don't quite understand what this means. This is in the budget on trends and issues. It's called debt set off. The City Treasurer also intercepts state refunds, lottery winnings, sports betting winnings, and casino winnings and rebates as another collection tool, including new delinquent items in the City Treasurer's yearly claims. Sounds like we got a lot of gambling folks and it has something to do with our treasury. Can you tell me about it?
So, if someone doesn't pay their taxes and they're a certain amount of time past due, we are able to intercept those funds, and we've seen an increase in the amount of funds that we can intercept because of the online gambling and the lottery winnings. It's not just your state tax return that we can take, it's anything that flows through the Virginia Department of Treasury. So, it has seen an uptick in our collections.
So, you don't intercept from everybody's state refunds? It's only people who are delinquent already?
Yes, ma'am. Only people that are.
Reed, it sounded like you do that for everything.
No, ma'am. It's only after they have not paid their original taxes and not responded to our collection efforts that haven't been forced, where we send out a reminder notice for them to pay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That clears it up.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Lee, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time we'll be joined by the Honorable Philip Kellum, the Commissioner of Revenue. He'll give the city council the overview of the Commissioner of Revenue's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six.
Welcome, Phil. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Let's see what we have here. All right, let's see if I'm capable of operating this machinery. If I sound a little congested today, you should have heard me yesterday before the rain. Thank goodness for rain, not only for the farmers, but to knock the pollen down a little bit.
And my charcoal-colored pollen is green now.
Okay, on the first slide, you'll, you'll see that we have our organizational summary with sixty, sixty-five point nine three employees, full-time employees, and just over seven point five million dollar budget. Get my notes in place here. Then you look at the, the budget itself, the funding that we receive from, primarily from you, the city council, and thirteen percent from the state, and the other portions are two percent, which is covering the expenses of the Department of Motor Vehicles Agency that I offer here in the City Hall. In other words, we can save folks, I always like to tell them, we can save you an hour, you can come here to get any of your car-related issues taken care of with the DMV. A lot of folks say that it's, it's a wonderful secret, but we did over thirty thousand transactions last year at five service windows, and we do just about anything you can handle for the car. We can't handle your real ID before May fifteenth or whenever the deadline is. All of the personal ID information has to be handled at a full-service center. But I appreciate y'all's support for that because it is really a wonderful thing for the citizens, and I really, I only, I only get good feedback on that. So, if you have a DMV office and you get nothing but good feedback, I think that's a pretty dag-on-good recipe. So, thanks for working with me on that. Also, looking at the expenses here, you can see it's eighty percent personnel and twenty percent equipment and so forth. There is a breakdown that I'd like to go through on some of the revenues there, but just to give you an idea, going back to the funding, thirteen percent of the funding does come from the state, but we, we generate assessments for just over a half billion dollars a year, about five hundred and two or five hundred and one billion, and thirteen percent of our budget comes from the state. But we assess three point four million in direct revenue for the state, so that's less than one percent of the revenue we generate. So, again, I think we have a pretty good working relationship with the state on this. I know how state funding can be cut at times, and you get mandates that really you don't have a whole lot of say in and you have a whole lot of responsibility in. But I do think that we're generating a great deal of revenue for you, and we're getting good support from the state in that effort as well. So, the operating summary for the department, if you look at that, you can see there's, there's an increase under the second to the last column of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's due to adding a systems analyst to manage and maintain our current revenue system that's used by the Treasurer's Office and my office as well. And we also, she moved from IT's budget over to air budget, so that is kind of a lateral move in y'all's parlance, but it comes onto my budget there. So, there's the increase there. Also, there's a fourteen, almost fifteen percent increase in increased costs, and that is for increased costs for IT and vendors' services. So, these tables will give you a little background on things that I know that are in your wheelhouse, because these are my primary responsibilities of providing revenue for you, business and personal property taxes and others. But in business taxes, you can see we did almost sixty-six million in calendar year twenty-four in BPO or Business License. And what I'd like to point out is that the office is transforming from a paper and a mail-oriented office into an online and an electronic office. You can see that we had eighteen point five million dollars come in online in twenty-three. It's up twenty-nine, almost twenty, almost thirty percent in twenty-four. Looking across, you can see meals taxes have gone up about eleven percent, the transient occupancy taxes about fifteen percent, and our online business accounts, we've got thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand accounts, and seventeen percent, excuse me, seventeen thousand, twenty-two, twenty thousand are online now, so two-thirds are online. And that saves time, it's a convenience for taxpayers, and it also, it, it, it lessens the traffic and wait times in City Hall. So, we're trying to create an interactivity that's convenient for the taxpayer, but we don't want to take away the personal connection where people just don't feel comfortable. Maybe they're unable to do it, or they just don't feel comfortable interacting in an electronic way, and that gives us more ability to do that at our counters and our interview rooms. And I can tell you, we love the new City Hall building, and so do the taxpayers. We have seven interview rooms, and it gives them a privacy and a comfort that really allows them to communicate personal tax information. So, the next table is tax relief, and I know this is something that the, the city takes pride in, but there's also a concern because some of the tax relief is mandated and you really have no say in it. And as the administrator of those taxes, some of those taxes, I have no say in it. It's dictated by either a constitutional amendment or by some law that the General Assembly may have passed, or some guideline that's in the director, I mean, the Department of Defense guidelines that are pertinent to my requirements. So, but there is great tax relief. First of all, on personal property for elderly and disabled, there's, there were nine hundred and twenty, there are only eight new applicants in the, in the twenty-three to twenty-four year. I will point out that you all lowered the tax rate on elderly and disabled folks from a dollar fifty to, excuse me, from three dollars to a millionth of a cent, and that's, that has really helped these nine hundred, just under a thousand taxpayers. You may have received, I hope you received a proposal I made about that, and I look forward to working with you in the future about raising the thresholds there. There would be about seven hundred and forty-five additional taxpayers that would be helped by that, raising the thresholds for income from twenty-nine thousand five hundred to fifty-two thousand, and the thresholds for assets up to one hundred and ninety-five thousand. We see that that would raise the program by about seven hundred and forty-five people. One where there's a great deal of growth is in veterans, and this is just on personal property. And the first car is, is automatically exempt, and the veteran gets to choose that car. So, if they have Cadillac and an old Pinto, they're going to put the Cadillac under that, and then they'll get the reduced rate from a dollar fif, of a dollar fifty instead of four dollars on the second car. So, this represents the second car. We had a sixty-five percent increase in people applying for that, veterans applying for that relief. And online personal property appeals, you may remember that we used to have many years ago, a line out in front of City Hall, people lined up to appeal their car tax on mileage and condition. When COVID came along, it just became prohibited to be able to do that. We were, we'd moved various places. Sheriff Staley had made space for us over near the, the jail at one time. We were over in the woods across the street. We were over at the ballpark up the street. Well, now we do it online, and there's no longer a line waiting to get your car reassessed. And you can see the numbers there that we've, we're, we'll do about, it dropped a little bit in the last year, but it's down to about twelve thousand. So, real estate tax relief, this is a very large portion of relief that you, the city council, have decided to provide. For elderly and disabled relief, we have about fifty-one hundred people in the program, and in fiscal year twenty-four, it was about fourteen million. It grew about five percent in this fiscal year. In veterans' relief, that's grown about twenty-nine percent. That's year over year, twenty-nine percent. So, you may have heard about, we were trying to see if we could address an issue that was with surviving spouses of service members that died in the line of duty, and I think it was an unintended consequence of the recent referendum where it coupled those folks with surviving spouses that died, who were killed in action or died of wounds. And the killed-in-action benefit was fifty, up to the, up to the average assessed value on a single-family home was exempt. It was no bill, no rate, no class, it was exempt. The line-of-duty surviving spouses had benefited from a tax class that was created by the General Assembly, and you, the city council, had put that rate for that tax class at a millionth of a cent, so they were receiving no bill. With the passage of the recent referendum, they were grouped with the KIA group, so now they are receiving some bills, and we're working with the General Assembly, hoping that it would at least provide that option for you in the future, because these were, we have about fifty, just over fifty here in Virginia Beach. I don't see it as a fast-growing class of property owners, but it is some that are affected, and I think you all were quite generous and, and attentive to their interests in twenty-twenty-three when the benefit went in place. So, it was in place for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. It will not be in benefit for, in twenty-twenty-five, I guess I should say fiscal year twenty-six. Let's see. Yeah, okay, the last one. And then, we're, we're in the initial phase of sourcing a new vendor. I remember John Atkinson saying, you know, if I can ever get a new tax system in here, I'm out of here. And it, it took him forty-one years, I guess, I don't know. No, but it really does take a long time to get these in, and so we're beginning to source it again. And as you know, technology advances quickly, and we need to stay in touch, stay up in, up to pace with it to serve the public in a manner that's practical as well as efficient. I'm looking at a couple of other of my notes that I wanted to bring up, but we're, we're doing the market surveys right now for that, and we're working very hard to transition all these visits to City Hall by eliminating the need for online, I mean, in-person visits and get back to my principle of online, not in-line. So, I appreciate the, being a tenant in your building, I appreciate the, the neighborliness, that we have a good working relationship with the Treasurer and everyone in this building, and I look forward to your questions.
And Phil, we appreciate what you do, and I'll tell you what, the physical facility down there, with having you basically in the same room and everything, the chemistry is great, and I think there's a high degree of, you know, customer satisfaction. Stacy?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for all you do. Question for you. The, our government's just imposed a twenty-five percent tariff on all new vehicles coming, being imported into this country. What effect do you see that having on the personal property tax on new vehicles that are coming here?
This year, it won't have any effect because the assessments are based on the value January first. Next year, flip a coin, I think it's, I wouldn't pretend to advise you on what the car industry may do, but at the end of the day, I think that it's fair to expect that it's going to change the way manufacturers may have to forecast and look into the future, but it will certainly affect what inventories are available for new car dealers, and it'll affect the used car market as well.
That's my point, in that certainly if there's a twenty-five percent increase in the price of a new vehicle, there'll be less vehicles available for sale.
Correct.
And that's going to have a dramatic effect on the assessed value of used vehicles, similar to what we just experienced with COVID, when there were, the supply of new cars was interrupted and used cars became extremely valuable. There was a number of instances where used vehicles were worth actually more than what people paid for them originally.
It's true.
We could be looking at that same thing going on in the future, and we just need to be prepared to react to that because it could have a dramatic effect on, on assessments moving forward.
Could, and I'm happy to say that the city council in twenty-twenty-two and again in twenty-twenty-three worked with me because I made a presentation in early twenty-two about what I saw as a distortion in the market, and I would stand corrected on my terminology if anybody wants to do that, but it seemed distorted to me in all my years. You know, used cars depreciate unless they're somewhat unusual, and, you know, new, new cars depreciate pretty doggone quickly. But what we had was new cars in limited supply, and, you know, the base price was quite high, and used cars. And used cars appreciated. And, you know, I, I, people were calling me, this is a depreciating asset. I said, not this year. And frankly, the, I came to the council and said, look, there's three ways we could deal with this. One, you could raise the rate, I mean, lower the rate. Two, we could work together on a ratio. Or three, you could take the windfall. And I'm glad to say that the council, for two years, worked, we worked together. And had a 75% ratio for 2022 tax year and an 85% ratio for the 23 tax year. Because that was looking at kind of the growth and the numbers. But I, I'm sure you understand the elements of that. And I think that the council addressed that. Now, I don't know what the future holds, but I think that's a tool that's in our toolbox we could use.
I just bring that up because I think we need to be prepared looking forward. Also, I believe the, in this year's, the city manager's proposed budget for this year, there is a dollar 50 assessment on boats. I believe you were the commissioner the last time we had a, a tax on boats.
I was.
And could you give us the reasoning behind getting rid of that tax?
Well, administratively, it was, it, it took a lot of time, a lot of personnel. And quite frankly, there were a lot of facets to not only the discovery, but confirmation of any assessment. We had a source of assess, of, of where, who owned the boats. Either through the Department of, I always want to say Game Land and Fisheries, Department of Wildlife Services with the state and with Coast Guard. The registrations were there. It's just the distribution of how the tax would be applied is, it, it's just amazing. The people with the small boats would be stuck paying the tax because people with the large boats or the very expensive boats, you might say, well, they can afford it, they can afford that boat, why not pay the tax? Well, if they had a tax for on a million dollar boat, it would be $15,000. They'd put fuel in the tank and go to Norfolk or go to Hampton. Or in the past, they would go to Portsmouth. Or they would just go to Florida or go somewhere else where there may not be a tax. So when it comes time for me to administer that and discover them, I have to determine where the boat was on January 1st. And if it was static and stayed there, then that's easy. But, you know, boats are sharp on one end and they, they move. And so then I have to determine where they may be or may have been. And I can get captain's logs, I can get fuel receipts, I can get dockage information from the dock masters and so forth. But putting that all together is taking me away from some of the other places where I can raise more revenue. And frankly, when the council voted to reduce the tax rate on boats, it was, we've had a growth in boats of 7,000, we've gone from 13,000 to 20,000. And frankly, the, the fuel receipts, the, the repairs and the ancillary benefits of people spending money in restaurants and hotels to come down to go sport, not just sport fishing, but, you know, do charter fishing and the like, is a benefit that we get from it. So it's certainly, it's up to the council to decide whether you want to do that. But as the administrator of that tax, I can tell you that a lot of times, the little guys, in this case, I think your proposal takes 18 feet or under 18 feet off the, off the mark. But the, the, the smaller boats will be there. They'll either take them out of the boat rack and put them on a trailer and move them somewhere else. Or if they're there, they're going to get stuck paying a tax. The bigger boats on general will move. They will. And I can tell you from experience, I had water surveys, I had people going out at different times of the year. And I would sight a boat, take a picture of it, send a bill to somebody in December. And they say, no, my boat was in Florida. And I said, well, we sighted it in January, September and so forth, right here. When was it in Florida? Let me see your dock receipts. So.
It's not just the revenue that would be coming from the boat tax, but it's also the effect that it would have on marinas and on repair facilities and the business license that we collect as a city would be adversely affected by a boat tax, in your opinion.
I, I can't quantify that now. I think anecdotally, yes. But I can't give you a number on that. I just know that as a matter of business, it does create business through repairs, fuel. I mean, fuel, fuel taxes are a lot. And it, it does benefit.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at this point? You know, Phil, thank you very much. I'll tell you what, it's a challenging job and a challenging economy and you guys are doing great. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you all very much. Look forward to working with you. I hope you've received my proposals on those tax relief for B-Pole and for personal property. And if you want me to come back, I'll be glad to talk to you about that as a group or, you know, personally. Okay?
Maybe after the budget.
Okay.
Thank you. Or before, if you like.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll be joined by the Honorable Chief Judge, Tanya Felton. She's going to come and give the city council overview of the Circuit Court's proposed budget for fiscal year 25, 26.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Again, I'm Tanya Felton, I'm current, the current chief judge of the Virginia Beach Circuit Court. I'm joined here today by Judge Lewis, who was my predecessor. He was a former chief judge, as well as Dawson Entwistle, who's sitting over there. He's our court administrator. And so thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time this afternoon. I trust that each of you have received the letter that was signed by all the judges in Virginia Beach, addressing the ongoing maintenance concerns at the courthouse, as well as the urgent need to bring the facility into full compliance with the American with Disabilities Act. We recently had a productive and constructive meeting with the mayor and vice mayor. And I deeply appreciate the concern and commitment shown to, shown to ensuring the safety and access to justice for all citizens and employees. And I continue to emphasize the importance of addressing these issues promptly and efficiently. We are grateful for the budget proposal recommendation. And we'd like to request consideration of two additional items that we believe are critical. They are, one, the addition of one full-time judicial assistant. And secondly, funds for our recovery court. First, we're requesting the addition of one full-time judicial assistant. In 2020, the General Assembly enacted a law that allowed criminal defendants to elect a jury trial, but be sentenced by a judge if found guilty. Before the law was enacted, if a criminal defendant took a jury trial, then they would have to be sentenced by the jury. Judges generally sentenced using what are called the sentencing guidelines, which are collected by the General Assembly, what they're prepared by the General Assembly. And generally, those sentencing guidelines tend to be called for a lesser period of incarceration than often what jurors, a jury would impose. As a result, that had, that, that changed significantly, reduced the risk for defendants seeking a trial by jury, leading to a dramatic increase in our requests for jury trials. And I'll show you, this is where our budget, here on this sheet. It shows that in 20, in 2021, we had 222 jury trials scheduled. By last year, that number had rose, risen to 633 jury trials. And I'm just talking jury trials. We have all other, all other kinds of hearings, civil and criminal, that are not jury trials, that we are also managing. And with only four months into this year, we have already scheduled, to date, 500 jury trials within four months. This represents nearly a 200% increase, which has become difficult to manage with the current staff that we have. The volume is placing a significant strain on scheduling and compliance with constitutional legal requirements. Currently, our court administrator is trying to keep track of scheduling as our current assistants must schedule all the other dockets for the seven judges, among other things that they do. Criminal defendants are entitled to a speedy trial. And delays in scheduling may result in these cases being dismissed, which means a defendant would be released if they're in custody. And where with the inability, speedy trial would give the inability to retry those individuals. This directly impacts public safety, access to justice, and is concerning to victims. Additionally, the court is seeking the approval, approval from the Virginia Supreme Court to establish a behavioral health docket to manage defendants with mental illness. This judicial assistant would also be responsible for coordinating that new docket, further highlighting the need for additional support. At this time, that second critical consideration we want you to consider is funding for our recovery court. And so I'm going to have Judge Lewis come up, who actually runs our recovery court, to talk to you about their needs at this time.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
I'd like to thank Judge Felton for assuming all the responsibilities of being chief judge. Because I found it to be very challenging and I could never find that fetching smile that she's got. In 2016, now Virginia Court of Appeals Judge, then Circuit Court Judge Fruchy, decided that he thought a, what they called back then drug court, now it's called recovery court, would benefit the substance abuse community in this city. And so he single-handedly put the program together. It's all mapped out and mandated by state law, so we don't have lots of discretion. But he managed to put this program together in a revenue-neutral setting. And it has remained that way since 2016. The program started off very small. We are now set up to handle 30 participants at one time. We currently have 16 active participants in the program. We have, quite frankly, at, at least in my view, we have outgrown the revenue-neutral picture that was envisioned in order to get this program off the runway. And so I am here this afternoon to request that you consider a modest annual funding for the program. The number I have in mind is $20,000. It is not a magic number. I can tell you if those, for those of you who have questions, I can tell you the considerations that we took into account in coming up with that number. But it is certainly not in cement or without flexibility. We're, we're basically running on empty now. We have been since the inception of the program. So any help we can get from the city would be immensely appreciated. That having been said, I'm happy to answer any questions, give you any statistics. We've, just, just off the top here, I can tell you, since the program started, we have initiated 80 participants, almost evenly split between males and females. We've graduated almost 50% of those members that we have enrolled. It's an 18 to 24 month intensive, four and now five-phase program, requiring challenges that I find amazing that these, most of them are kids, so I call them kids. We have some, some older members. But amazing requirements for people who are wallowing in opioid addiction, which is, which is basically what we are working with every day. And to, to have graduated nearly 50% of them is, in my opinion, something to be very proud of. We currently have 16. For your information, some of you already know this because you've joined us, but we meet in a courtroom that I preside over every Thursday afternoon at 2 o'clock. And we go through each active participant, discuss with him or her their progress during the preceding week, whether they've had any relapses, whether they've had any cravings. And it's a fascinating process because these kids want to get well. They just need the help to get well. And whether we like it or not, the realities of the situation are a opiate addict wandering up and down Laskin Road has almost no assets available to him or her, readily available to him or her that provides the long-term sustained support that our recovery court does. It's like I said, it's an 18 to 24 month program and it ain't easy. It's not easy to get into, but it ain't easy to, to complete. Any questions I can answer for anyone?
Yeah, Judge Lewis, let me just say, I had the opportunity to attend one of the sessions of, I guess it was last year.
Yeah, I remember. Thank you for coming.
And, you know, the thing is, what I noticed was compassion, empathy and tough love.
All, all, all three live in that courtroom.
Yeah. And I'll tell you what, it's a, you know, you live in a very active building. You know, as we found out last week.
In many ways, active.
And maybe not functional, but active, but we're going to address that a little later. But I'm just going to say the program that you have, I think, is valuable. And if you talk to our sheriff, that a significant majority of his inmates are people that are, you know, having mental challenges, you know, going forward. And, you know, whatever we can do, you know, to, you know. And I think what you're doing is just tremendous because it's just, it, it's easy to try somebody and put them in jail for, you know, drug use or anything. But it's not helping because they're going to probably bounce back.
There's not much probably about it. The recidivism rate without some sort of intervention is in excess of 50%. And, and, and every day, Judge Felton and I, in separate courtrooms, sit there going, you know, I've got, I got two options with this poor fellow who's addicted to heroin. I can put him over in Sheriff Holcomb's hotel. He's going to get virtually no treatment. He's going to get virtually no care. It's not what it's designed, the jail's not set up to do that. And so when he comes out, he might have been sober for a couple of months, but he's still a heroin addict and he'll be high within 24 hours. And you give me those same people and give them an opportunity to go through a support program like our recovery court, and that recidivism number gets cut in half, which is, I think, a significant achievement.
I think it's a great program. Anybody else got a comment? Michael?
I just want to follow up on that. I'm in agreement with all that's been said. And when you think about the expense of $20,000, it's actually a savings to the taxpayer if the recidiv, if recidivism is 50%. Because that's police officers, human services, folks, productive citizens, all those things. It's actually a good value for the taxpayer to invest something like $20,000 into your program. And, and is a compassionate approach. So I'm in full support of that.
Thank you very much. Don't get me wrong, if you can find a million dollars, I can, I can find a way to spend it. But the, the way we, we came at this very modestly, out of respect for the process and out of respect for this body. But my priorities for whatever funds, if any, we can get, will go at first towards training. This program, this concept of drug rehab through a program like this has exploded in the last five years. And we now have magnificent training available for our personnel on a national level. Before I came over this afternoon, I looked up what programs are out there. And I think the, the nearest one is, is down in a, in the Panhandle area of Florida. It's not a very attractive venue. But my best estimate tuition, program fees, transportation and hotels is that it'll cost somebody $3,500 to $5,000 for every participant we can get enrolled in the program. And this is world-class training. The folks that are running this program right now are all self-taught. They were volunteers from the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, most importantly, the Department of Health and Human Services, just said, yeah, we're happy to, to pitch in and do the best we can with the skill set we have, which is not insignificant. But these training programs, I am told, are just magnificent and worth, well worth the expense associated with getting someone through the program.
Sorry, could I just say one more thing? In addition to the value, I think, for the taxpayer that I just described, the value goes far beyond dollars and cents, as I know you know. But I also recognize that and I know others do here as well. It's the value of maintaining the integrity of families and providing hope and opportunity for someone, keep a job.
Do you want to join the court? You would, you would fit right in. You would, you would fit right in. I would sell you, counsel.
So I just, I just want to, just, I don't, I just didn't want my comments to be reflected only in the interest of the financial investment, but it's the human investment.
Human capital. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
We'll see you at the next swearing-in.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time we'll be joined by the Honorable Chief Magistrate Andrew Truitt, as he comes and presents on the, on his proposed budget from the magistrate's office.
And thank you. So I promise to be as short as I can be. I'm probably the lowest budget item that you're going to consider in this entire process. I've been told by the finance people that we are. Magistrates are state employees. We're appointed by the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia. Our office is scheduled to have 20 people full-time, plus myself, when we're fully staffed. Right now, we're down one, and we have two in training. We're open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our main office is at the city jail, and we have a satellite office at the second precinct. We have statutory authority to issue arrest warrants and summonses. We conduct bail hearings. We grant, deny bail. We issue emergency protective orders, search warrants, mental health emergency custody orders, and temporary detention orders, medical treatment orders, and now ESROs, the red-flag laws. We issue those firearm orders, and we have some other things we do, as authorized by law. For example, swearing-in firefighters a couple weeks ago. Almost all of our funding is supplied by the state. Our salaries, our main computer equipment that we use, and the consumable office supplies provided by the Office of the Executive Secretary. It was just under $2 million for the last fiscal year. However, under the Code of Virginia, each locality that's served by a magistrate office is responsible for quarters. And the Office of the Executive Secretary has interpreted that to mean pretty much anything durable. So if I want to get all-you-can-eat paper and toner, I can get that from the state, but if I need a chair, I have to talk to the city. The people who were hired in our office before 2008, and we have three, are also eligible for a supplement from the city, and they get the maxed-out $5,000 that's allowable under the law. We have three people that are still here that are doing that. Now, that's a little bit of a topic, because when we initially prepared our numbers, we had four. We had one just retire first. Our proposed budget is $22,295 in personnel costs. Again, that includes a $5,000 supplement for one person who isn't here anymore. And we would ask that the city transfer that over into our operating budget for the other expenses for this year. Our operating expenses are $21,687. At the end of the fiscal year last year, we just barely went over the budget, because we had a big-ticket item for us, a $13,000 installation of amplifiers in our, in our hearing room windows. And that just put us over the limit, but the city was able to put together, I think, $400 from other accounts to do that. And we do believe that we're going to have enough to meet our needs for the year based on the proposed budget. Now, there is a change the legislature enacted, the legislature enacted last year. The section of the code that describes the quarters for magistrates now has a little bit of clarification. The state is recommending that we have a separate entrance and exit, separate parking, and a physical barrier between us and the public, and a panic button. Now, at the main office, we have all of those except the panic button. The city's gone to an electronic panic button system, and our computers are mostly state computers. We have city computers, but we're not owning them all the time, so we don't really have panic button access. At the second precinct, however, we don't have the physical barrier between us and the public. We don't have a separate entrance and exit, and the parking is also not separate. Over the last couple of years, I think it was two years ago, my predecessor and supervisor, magistrate, regional supervisor, Tom Cahill, talked to the city about getting our main office renovated with the idea of upgrading site security. There was an original plan back in 2019. COVID put it on hold. A new proposal was put together, and the city went ahead and found the money, and the construction is finally complete. We learned during COVID that we could conduct a lot of our hearings by video, no longer have to be in person. The previous method was to have somebody sitting across the desk from us while they were making a complaint. And sometimes that would involve people who are not very happy about the decisions we were making. And the nearest help, deputies on the other side of our wall, are in an area where they can't be armed, and they would have to go to another section of the jail, grab their weapons, come through two security doors, then get to our door and have to have the correct key, because as part of the jail, we weren't part of the city's card-reader access system. So there were a lot of problems that we had with our security. And the city stepped up. They changed the locks, so they have the card readers. We now have armored walls in between us and the public, and armored pass-through windows for the exchange of paperwork. We have secured two, now secure hearing rooms at the main office, security cameras that look over the parking lot, look over our back door, look over our front door, and we can see them at both ends of the hallway that we work through. And again, we're in the access system for the doors. So now emergency personnel can slap their badge and run in if there's some kind of problem. And I'm going to once again recognize the city manager's office, and especially Monica Kroski. She sort of took us in hand and made things happen, and was dynamic throughout it, and I have nothing but gratitude for. We still need upgrades at the second precinct. We don't really meet the statutory standards for that. I've spoken to some of the same people at the city who did the revision, or the review of our other office, and we're considering some ideas. Part of the problem is the physical layout is going to make introducing our own exit a challenge. But our inner lobby doors don't have, don't have the card-reader access on them yet. We don't have any armored spaces or physical barriers between us and the public. The citizens can be let in. Pictures. This is our new lobby. Two new hearing rooms on the citizen's side, and then that's the view from the magistrate's side. And you can see it's an armored pass-through window. Which has made the exchange of paperwork, including the cash that we take for cash bonds, which can be considerable. We did half a million cash bonds last year. Now we're not doing that, open to the public, with a crime of opportunity waiting to happen. At the second precinct, the outer door to our hearing rooms, well, we sort of ad hoc coupled together a hearing room over the last few years. The PDOs at the second precinct can control the outer door to our lobby. We have an inner lobby, and in that inner lobby is a former probation office that's sort of modular, that we had converted into a hearing room with video and printers, so we can see people and hear people. But if we have to exchange paperwork, we still have to open the door to them to do that. And we're working with the city manager's office to figure out some solutions for that. Over the last couple of years, the city's put a lot of effort into improving our site security, and we are grateful. Any questions?
Any questions at all? Okay, but thank you. You are a valuable service, and let me just, just reinforce your kudos to Monica Kroski. She is indeed part of a team that is dedicated to getting things done and improving situations.
That's exactly it. Getting things done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time we'll be joined by Gregory Smith, the Director of Juvenile Probation Programs. He'll come and give the council overview of the proposed 2526 fiscal year budget for his division.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good afternoon, counsel. Click is your word. Okay. As most of you are aware, we are part of the State of Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice. There is a supplement of four employees from the city that run what we call our CHENS program, Children in Need of Supervision. Want to emphasize that the vast majority of funding that we get from the city goes to direct services, paying for things like GPS monitoring to monitor those in the community who are at risk, also shelter care. We also do a vast array of services, including substance abuse assessments, substance abuse treatment. We also pay for things like individual counseling, family counseling, when families don't have the resources through private insurance to take care of those things. I would note that there are a couple of policies that are not major, but things that have been changing in the last couple of years that have impacted the population we work with. One, the Department of Juvenile Justice now has a mandatory detention status for those juveniles who are charged with firearm charges. There has been an increase in the last couple of years where juveniles have had more firearms, and also multiple firearms in multiple cities. We also have a mandatory detention status when juveniles come in on grand larceny, auto, and felony eluding. What we found out is that a lot of times in the past, prior to these initiatives being in place, young people would steal cars in one city, drive to another city, commit crimes, drive to another city. But what we found out is detaining them early on not only promotes better public safety, but it also gives us an opportunity to intervene early. Recently, we've been dealing with a lot of substance use. Therefore, 65% of our staff have been trained in administering Narcan. Sadly to say, last year, we actually had a young lady who was on supervision who overdosed, and we felt like it was really something that the juvenile probation department needed to do and get more hands-on in terms of Narcan. I would note some of our initiatives that are underway that we're extremely proud of. We've noticed the uptick in cases of school threats. With today's climate, all threats have to be taken seriously. Therefore, we've instituted a new program called STOP. It's School Threat Offenses Program. It's a partnership with the Virginia Beach Police Department, and it's an engagement piece that not only involves the juvenile charged with these offenses, but also brings the parents in. And one of the things that we really emphasize is that there are a lot of times when parents are just unaware of what's going on with their children, not only in the school setting, but in the community in general. Our initial class is going to kick off on April the 3rd, I'm sorry, April the 23rd. That'll be our first cohort, and we look forward to this being an exciting partnership and an effective intervention for some of those young people charged with school offenses. We also have instituted the Gang Resistance Education and Training, or the GREAT program. It involves those young people who are at risk of gang involvement and other negative behaviors in the community. This would be our third cohort, and that kicks off on April the 24th. And again, because of the increase in illegal firearm possession by young people, we're also developing a new intervention that will promote both, both education and engagement in dealing with the situations of young people and firearms. While we don't have a specific budget increase, I did want to bring to council's attention the issue of shelter care. Currently, we share our shelter care space, and for females, that's only eight beds. We share that with four other localities. When you look at it as one metropolis, we have about a million people, and we have only eight female shelter care beds. Recently, there have been situations where we've been unable to place young ladies in shelter care placement because of lack of availability of space. Also, the current provider that we have doesn't always have the ability to keep that facility open. So just kind of wanted to bring attention to that, because it is something that I think our city's going to be dealing with as we move forward. There's just not enough shelter care space for young people who need a temporary placement outside of the home when they're dealing with either serious domestic issues or also minor crimes where detention is not the appropriate placement. And last but not least, I would say, if there are any questions, I'm willing to take them at this time.
Cash.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just wanted to ask you about the percentages on GREAT. It seems like a program that's needed in certain pockets. Thank you for your initiative and getting that started. Are you in the schools, or you just, when you receive reports that they're in trouble? How does, how did GREAT come about?
GREAT started when I was in Norfolk, at the Norfolk Juvenile Probation Department. It was a way to reach young people who are already involved in our system that were at risk of gang involvement, negative behaviors in the community. It was a way to get them prior to getting deep in gang involvement. So we don't really take referrals from the school system, and we're not in the school system. Unfortunately, with the GREAT program, you actually have to be involved in the criminal justice system in order to get the service. Now, with the STOP program and the school threats, we're really gearing that to be an alternative for judges when they have young people before them with these school-related charges. We of course want to take all charges seriously, but we also want to give young people the opportunity for education, engagement, and a possible dismissal, so not to have that on the records.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Barbara?
Well, of course, you know, in reading just what occurs, there seems to be more firearms usage, particularly by our young people. And I guess that's what you are really working on, and I would just say to you that as far as I'm concerned, that should be a high priority for us. Whatever we can do is something we really need to look at doing. So if you have any ideas of things that we can do to help with that situation, I think it should be one of our priorities. We certainly don't want our young people to be in this situation, as they apparently are, and it seems to be increasing, as, as it says here. The severity of the charges and the number of probation placements and the overall length of stay on probation have all increased, is what it says here about the juvenile probation portion. And I just think it's, it's a great concern, and I think anything you can bring to us that we can do to help, I'm certainly open to hearing, and I think everybody else would be too.
Well, thank you for that, Madam Counselor. And there, there is a, a program that we're developing now. We're calling it FREEZE, Operation Freeze. It's firearm reduction through engagement and education, zero exceptions. And what that program is geared towards is getting parents and guardians on board with things like room checks, things like communicating the dangers of firearms, things like being in a setting where the impact that you have on the community is really emphasized. We're doing programming around that. These are at the early stages, but we do know at some point I will be appearing before counsel, asking to expand our team by maybe one or two members, so we can absorb some of those programs that are high priorities.
Freeze, I didn't get all of it, but I did get those last two that said zero exceptions.
Zero exceptions. We, we found out that the message that needs to be sent to the community is that there are no indications, and there are no observations that we want to have to say, hey, young people should be running around in the community with firearms. That's why it's zero exceptions.
I think that's an important part of that, that program, so let us hear from you.
Will do.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question was answered just now, so I appreciate it, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, appreciate it. Yeah, let me just say one thing real quick. As you talked to Chief Nutigay, and he talked about youth and marijuana, and, you know, and it seems a lot of the gun violence, you know, that we've had in our city, you've got some hackers coming in from other cities and everything, that, you know, the shooting that we had at Jungle Golf a couple of years ago was a couple of high school students from another city. But, but once again, it's, you know, it's a tragic thing, and, you know, I think we're going to have to, you know, get, you know, we had a, the last couple of years, a mayor's youth violence task force for 757. I think it may be time to, you know, reconstruct that and get that going again, because it knows no boundaries.
Yes, sir. And, and Honorable Mayor, we certainly want all of the citizens that are only commonwealth of the United States to come, enjoy the beautiful city of Virginia Beach, but we do want our young people to follow the law when they get here. We have a saying, you can come here on vacation, but you may leave on probation.
We'll remember that one. Hey, but listen, thanks, thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be from the Director of Elections, the General Registrar, Christine Lewis. She'll present the voter registrars and elections fiscal year 2526 budget. Before she wants, before she gets going, I want to acknowledge that Nanette Miller, the Chair of the Virginia Beach Electoral Board, is here as well.
Hey, welcome to both of you.
Thank you, welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I am Christine Lewis. I'm the Director of Elections for the city. Our office has about 14 FTEs with a little about, about $3 million over budget. As you can see, it's about a 50-50 split for our budget, but it's not really accurate because we pay our election officials out of the operations budget, and that's between about $275,000 and $500,000 that we do. Okay, let's see. We are down 22% from last year because we had that one-time increase for the presidential We do have one law change. The voter registration books will close 10 days prior to the election. It used to be 21 days. And then we have a couple initiatives that we're running right now. The print-on-demand ballot system, we got that last year from the state. We'll run it in about 10 precincts for this election, and we hope to use it in all elections for November. We have a CIP for the voting equipment that's in place. Hopefully, we'll get that approved in May. And we're working with IT for the election official management and the election results. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
You folks are so blessed to have an election every year in the Commonwealth, aren't you? My goodness. When you think about general elections, you think about primaries and everything else. God bless you. Rosemary?
Yes, you're very, very busy. I just wanted to ask you about the prospect of your new facilities, and are you excited about that and starting to make plans for that?
We are excited about it. We're not sure when we're going to move in. It looks like maybe next year in the summertime. We're hoping to move in this year in the summer, but the plans are probably next year.
Okay, anybody else?
Just, thank you. Just real quick, when we met, you were telling me about a program, and I thought that was going to be one of your bullets here, but it wasn't, about that would sync the data and all that, and you were, is that what you were talking about with IT? I just was trying to get straight on that.
So right now, we have a mobile app that the city provides for us. We're going to go to a different application, and hopefully it can input the results in quicker, so you guys can get your election results in before midnight.
Or yes, that would be really nice.
Yes.
So is that, is that in the works, is what we're hearing, or?
Yes, yes. IT is working with us on the budget.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I'll take credit for that.
If I can add to that for the...
Use the microphone, please.
If I can add to that, because I just went to the conference for the Virginia Electoral Board Association, and the discussion came up, up there as well as the importance of getting election responses earlier in the evening. And one of the hookups is because of ranked choice voting in Northern Virginia. And so that tends to slow down. So while everyone wants to get their hopes up, we have to be very careful to not let you get your hopes up that you're going to be partying on election night just yet because of there's Loudoun County, this is their, is it Loudoun County?
Arlington County.
Arlington County, it's their third time, but Charlottesville, it's their first time this go-around.
So are you saying they affect us getting off?
Yes, they affect us.
It's a different system we have to use. So we used to input directly on Verus. Now we have to use...
Use the microphone, please.
You told me that.
Yeah, we have to use Election Night Reporting app into the Verus system, so it's, it's really complicated. You have to go back and forth each election. In Verus, we would just have to basically enter in the data, and now we have to go back and forth, like twice for each race.
Okay. Anybody else? How many precincts do we have now?
108.
108. And that means staffing for that for multiple times, year after year.
That's correct.
Thank you so much for what you do.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, you'll hear from Director Jada Lee. She's the Director of the Emergency Communications and Citizen Services Department. She's going to give City Council an overview of their fiscal year 25 and 26 budget.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me today. So there's a lot of new faces around the table. So emergency communications and citizen services translates to Virginia Beach 911, Virginia Beach 311. We answer all of the public safety calls for service and non-emergency for the city of Virginia Beach. So I too am going to be pretty quick today, so that Chief Stroud has an opportunity to spend some quality time with you all today.
Yeah, how much is that going to cost?
So our overall departmental budget for 25, 26 budget is remaining the same. Our FTEs have not changed. The one thing that you'll note here is that the largest portion of my budget is personnel, and the majority of it does go to our 911 services for the city of Virginia Beach. So I'm going to just jump right into some of the great things that we're doing over at ECCS. And one of the things that I wanted to talk to you all about today was about our newest division, which is the Watch Desk. The Watch Desk had a soft opening in August of 2024, and the purpose of the Watch Desk is to provide situational awareness for city staff, leadership, and our citizenship. The new division's taken on a role and responsibility of sending out emergency notifications that were previously handled by the 911 supervisors. So what does that mean? That means that now the 911 supervisors have the opportunity to manage incidents, large-scale or critical incidents, in a timely manner, and they're not having to worry about sending out notifications, so we can get those notifications out much quicker. They also work very closely with emergency management and emergency management security. Right now, they are open from 5:30 in the morning until 10:30 at night, and we have four full-time staff members, and we are looking at hiring a dedicated supervisor for the Watch Desk later on this year. The next great thing is Amazon Connect, which is a technology that we implemented in April of 2024 in collaboration with City IT. So this technology is used on our non-emergency, the 757-385-5000 line, and it allows callers to have their needs and requests addressed by an AI auto attendant. So when we first got this project approved, our anticipation was it might handle 10% of the calls. The first year, maybe 20% the second year. But since the inception of this new technology, this technology is handling about 45% of the calls that come in on the non-emergency line. So that means that our 911 telecommunications are able to focus on handling emergency calls for service. And since this has gone into effect, we have been able to increase our call-answer times by almost 3 to 5%, I mean, 3 to 5 seconds, which is huge, because the same people who take the 5,000 calls answer the 911 calls. The next major change for ECCS is we were able, with the City Manager and working with Human Resources, we were able to hire a public safety clinician, which has been needed for many years across the public safety agencies. So now each of your public safety agencies has a public safety clinician. One of the things that we have noticed over the years, and I've been doing this for many years, is that as a 911 telecommunications, you don't see what's happening, you only hear it. So having someone on staff at the onset of the incident to assist our call-takers to work through or unpack, as we like to say, what they've just experienced, will help us with our retention. We were losing about 10% of our staff due to their inability to manage the crisis that they encounter daily. So, Mr. Manager and Human Resources, a huge shout-out for recognizing our need and allowing us to have these positions housed in our agencies. And then lastly, for us, we've made some changes to our hiring and training process. So across that 911 industry, probably for the last 10 to 15 years, there's been a deficit in hiring. We can bring them in the door, but we just have a hard time keeping them, or we're just not able to get them in the door. So what we found was that we lose about 50% of our academy class because there are certain knowledge, skills, and abilities that they have to learn. So traditionally, we brought somebody in, they went through a 12-week academy, we put a lot of time and energy and money into them, and then they got to the operations floor for on-the-job training, and they were not able to meet the KSAs for every single position that they were required to work. So what we've done is, is we recognize their strengths now. So let's just say they start as a radio operator, but they then move to call-taker, and they're not successful there. We will put them back on radios, then we will move them to the fire radio, then to the EMS radio, so they're still getting their career progressions. And then after they've had more experience, we'll move them back to the call-taker position. Or maybe we don't, because we have other people who are extremely successful as call-takers, and maybe not so much as a dispatcher. So that has helped to increase our retention rate. We're at about 40% now with our new hires, so we're real happy about that. And overall, for our department, we're at about 79% retention, which is up about 18% from last year. So we're very happy with those numbers going up. And then just some of our initiative and things that we've been working on. So School Safety Task Force is with their Office of Emergency Management and Security. The majority of my leadership team serve on a committee under the school's task force, so we've had, seen a lot of great progression on those tasks, on the task force and working with them. Regent University, we are currently working with them to put in a tertiary backup position, a position, so that if Building 30 goes down and our backup center at the EMS building is not accessible, we can have at least one person at Regent that can take calls, and it would be their staff until we could get staff there. We're also looking at it as a collaboration with Regent, so that when they have their graduations, or God forbid, they were to have an active assailant there, we can send staff there, our equipment is there, and we're able to give them real-time updates and help. And then from last year, we have moved off of Verizon's legacy equipment. We are now on AT&amp;T's Ezzinet, which means it's all IP-based call routing and call answering equipment that we have now. No more old-time switches and that type of thing. We did a complete upgrade of our telephony system, and we are still working closely with our regional partners for a CAD-to-CAD project. So what that means is, is that we will be able to enter calls for service for another jurisdiction. The switch in the middle will have all the information. So if we take a call from Norfolk, because we do, because we're right there on the line, we no longer have to call them and be on hold, or they don't have to call us to be on hold. We're going to be able just to send them the call for service, and they'll be able to dispatch units. So I would be remiss if I did not tell you all that starting April 13th, which is next week, it is Telecommunicators Week. It's a nationally recognized program, and that's when we have the opportunity to thank the men and women of Virginia Beach ECCS for the great work that they do. Mr. Mayor will be over on next Wednesday to read the proclamation for Telecommunicators Week. We have a huge banquet this year, it's in Newport News, and that's this Saturday, and we will recognize our staff that were chosen for our of-the-year people. So with that...
Any questions?
That's what I have for you today.
Jade, I just want to thank you. You know, whenever we talk about Virginia Beach being the city of heroes, when we talk about our public safety, you're the folks that get the ball rolling. And, you know, we can't minimize or just take for granted what you do. You are essential. You're like the quarterback when things happen. You know, when I started this job around 2021 years ago, I'd go over to your department, I might see one or two screens. Now you go see, what, six, eight screens?
There's eight. Each position has eight screens.
There are eight screens up there where you've just got to coordinate depending on the nature of the call, and you never know the magnitude of the call coming in.
That's right.
And, you know, to be able to quarter, coordinate fire, police, CMS, the other things that you have to do takes a talent. And, you know, it's a type of talent that unfortunately folks burn out over. And, you know, that's a condition, you know, that's a situation. But I'll tell you what, you have done magnificent. You have done the city so proud, and, you know, and I'm glad you're working as a little backup with Regent. They actually have their own police department over there, and Chief Mitchell is a really good guy to, to work with, so at least. And I know for a fact that, you know, they work collaboratively with the fourth precinct quite a bit. But once again, you know, thank you and God bless you for what you and your folks do, and I'll see you next week.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll be joined by Chief Jason Stroud, EMS Department Director, and he'll come and give City Council an overview of the fiscal year 25 and 26 budget.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to think I'm here, you know, save the best for last, but I have a feeling it's probably a little more strategic to, to save the one that will garner the most conversation maybe for last. So Mayor and council, I do appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon to present the EMS portion of the City Manager's budget. I am joined, I'd like to recognize I'm joined by our EMS Business Manager, Mariana Twisdale, who is helping me out by giving some handouts to you, and certainly Mariana and, and team back at the office did the lion's share work of submitting our budget. This year, the EMS budget request has a noted increase, given the inclusion of projected EMS billing funds and the extra positions that these funds can help provide. If you recall, on December 10th, City Council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to move forward with further preparations for the implementation of a compassionate EMS billing program, which included incorporating it into our budget. I do plan to further talk, to further talk about EMS billing more specifically here in a couple slides. We have the obligatory pie chart slide to illustrate just kind of how the funds are split up. I think as we get to the tables to talk about our two funding sources, maybe it's, it's a little more pertinent demonstration. So, so keep in mind, in terms of our budget submission for this year, we are talking about two different funding sources, and, and one being the general fund, the other being a compassionate EMS billing program. So the general fund portion of the EMS budget is $25 million, with the majority of expenses being derived from staff costs. In addition, remember that EMS is the pass-through source for oceanfront lifeguard contract, which includes $2 million from the general fund and, and over $1 million for the remaining through the tip program. Overall, the proposed general fund increases are 1.59% less in fiscal year 26 than they are in this current fiscal year, and that's going to be due to shifting some expenses over to be funded by EMS billing, which I'll talk a little bit about. So, so the other funding source being EMS cost recovery or compassionate EMS billing program includes the projected $14.7 million that is from the consultant's report that we presented to you last fall for the EMS billing study. I've worked very closely with the Volunteer Rescue Council leadership to develop a plan for the use of these funds, which keeps them restricted to be used for EMS and volunteer rescue squad operating expenses. This includes using funds to allocate more than $4 million directly back to the rescue squads for their expenses and to build a fund to be able to replace ambulances. In addition, the funds can provide 29 additional uniformed personnel, which are sorely needed, centralized medical supplies, pharmaceuticals, training programs, and other needs. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll have some time dedicated specifically to the components of a compassionate billing program. So we continue to see our call volume increase year to year. This, this, last year was a statistically, I guess, significant increase for us at 4%. We continue to be challenged to have enough ambulance staffing to effectively handle this call volume and/or the demand that it puts on our providers. And we continue to see exponential cost increases for vehicles, supplies, and programs. Keeping in mind, as you were briefed, I believe it was last year now, we, we now had to start our own pharmacy program, which we're going to exceed $1 million startup cost, and, and we anticipate being close to half a million dollars annual. So to help address these challenges, this past year, several efforts were undertaken. These included a strategic planning process that we came and presented those findings to you in September of 2024, and those were done with all of our stakeholders at the table with us. In addition, I presented two related needs assessments to you this past year, one on staffing and one on vehicles. And Rescue Council President Mike McCracken and I presented you the findings of a third-party EMS billing study back in November. And again, council indicated their support to move forward with further planning... And again, council indicated their support to move forward with further planning, um, for EMS billing consideration through your December 10th resolution. As we know, all other Hampton Roads localities bill for their EMS services. Industry indicators seem to suggest that both in Virginia and nationally, 85% of people live in areas where they get billed for ambulance transport. This includes other East Coast tourism destinations such as Dare County on the Outer Banks, Rehoboth, Myrtle Beach, Ocean City, Daytona, Charleston, Savannah, or any other one that I could find. Here in Virginia Beach, when considering an EMS revenue recovery program, we're specifically talking about compassionate EMS billing. With compassionate being that ability to pay is never a factor of care and we do all we can to avoid out of pocket expenses, develop financial hardship policies, which ensure no patient is saddled with any debt and not refer any debt to collections. We are further recommending that the city consider residency as a factor when billing patients, which allows us to not balance bill these patients for any portions not covered by their insurance. This approach is similarly used in many other localities, including Fairfax County, Charlottesville, York County, Williamsburg, Prince William County. A compassionate EMS billing program, um, was recommended by the volunteer rescue squads and endorsed by all 10 of them and can provide the much needed funding in order to help sustain the Virginia Beach EMS system that we all appreciate. So in, um, our EMS budget request for fiscal year 26 does include the incorporation of a EMS billing program, which in turn would provide the funding source for all of our asks. This, this includes the ability to add 33.5 FTE, which, which is, uh, 29 uniformed staff to help with answering calls and staffing ambulances, couple of extra positions for, um, it, it, the administrative tasks that come with standing up in EMS billing program, um, as well as it also includes shifting the, um, our pharmacy supply cost and staffing cost over to the billing program. The billing program could also support a centralized medical supply program, whereas today, all the volunteer rescue squads have to purchase their own supplies independently. With this, those would all be pooled, bought as a pool and managed centrally to hopefully leverage cost savings. Also, um, I talked about the $4 million plus in direct contributions back to the rescue squads. We've worked with the rescue council to develop a formula that delivers an equitable distribution based on the size of that squad's memberships and the number of ambulances in their fleet. And then of course, we hope to adopt additional, um, training and health and wellness programs as well as, um, multiple clinical care initiatives. And this budget request does shift a million dollars from the general fund to EMS billing. I will add before I start, um, questions, you were given a handout, just kind of with some, some, I guess, we feel some important data points, certainly as constituents may have questions for you. On the backside, that is two sided, on the backside, we did include some compassionate EMS billing talking points that we've worked in conjunction with a communications office to develop. And there is a QR code there that, that people could be referred to for their information. So finally, I guess, um, one other thing, uh, our Department of EMS award ceremony is tomorrow evening. I know a number of you have RSVP'd, um, certainly you're all welcome. That will be 6:00 PM at the Museum of Contemporary Art. And, um, we're looking for a kind of a super special evening for our folks. And so just wanted to, um, thank those of you that are, are able to make it, thank you. Um, and the, the new director for the Virginia Office of EMS will be joining as our guest, um, and spending some time with us all day tomorrow to learn more about Virginia Beach. So we're excited about that. So that's all I have. I'll take questions.
Any questions, Michael and then Stacy.
Thank you, Chief. And, um, I just want to say how much really admiration I have.
For your professional team and your, and also all the volunteers. You do a really good job and you serve people in their, in their most vulnerable moments and.
Thank you.
Provide critical care. So thank you to all. I'm just thinking about an email I received from Michael McCracken, the Council of Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad's president, um, that I think he sent on last Friday that, um, expressed the, uh, support of all units in the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad system, which he characterized as important and unprecedented development. And I can do the EMS system. And I, and I will, um, I will share just from my knowledge about that system and about any other types of systems. It's difficult to get people to agree on a topic, especially on a deviation of policy. Could you just share a little bit about, because in Virginia Beach, and I know others will speak to this, but in Virginia Beach, we really take a lot of, um, we really celebrate the fact that the EMS system is largely driven by volunteers and it's something that makes our city unique. It's the largest volunteer rescue squad system in the country as far as I, as I'm aware. And, and that's something that there's a great tradition, there's a history, there's a, um, part of our culture. Um, and so for those volunteer rescue squads to agree to assist and to agree to, to agree to this departure is, um, is unprecedented and speaks to the, probably to the, um, merit of the proposed policy shift. Could you speak a little bit more about that and the volunteer side?
Yes, sir. And thank you for your comments. Um, and, and certainly, um, I think, I think that those that, including yourselves, that have known our system for some time would, would, would all agree that it's monumental to essentially get the, the 10 rescue squads at this point. So in Virginia Beach, we're, we're fortunate to have 10, uh, individual 501(c)(3) corporations, volunteer rescue squads, um, that be part of what comprises Virginia Beach EMS. Each of those squads manages their own corporate affairs. They all have their own president, vice president, some by different titles, but, but they're independently manage corporate affairs. And then operationally, um, they, they fall under the umbrella of the Department of EMS and follow centralized policies and protocols and training standards, et cetera. Um, and this unique partnership obviously has, um, been something the city's been very proud of for many years. I think though, however, where we're at, and as President McCracken, um, has, has shared with you previously, you know, we can't escape the sign of the times. The, the fact that ambulance cost increases have, have, have increased 30 to 40%, you know, essentially in the grand scheme of things overnight, you know? The fact that, um, medical supplies cost more than ever before. Our cardiac monitors, which, you know, a short time ago were, were in the $20,000 range are now exceeding $50,000. I mean, and meanwhile, the, the fund drives and donations that these rescue squads learned to survive on have not had a correlated increase as well. So, um, the fact that the 10 rescue squads agreed collectively through the rescue council, which is in city code as an advisory body to, to all of us on related matters. You know, they came together and sparked this initiative, understanding the need to find a new sustainable funding source if they hope to continue to exist. In addition, the rescue squads have agreed, and part of this was through a strategic planning process, which included representatives, um, from the volunteer rescue squads, as well as the rescue council, the foundation, as, as well as, um, our labor representation, as we have a number of employees in the union as well. And we all came together and agreed that we need additional staff, we need additional resources. And the system cannot continue to provide the needed services without additional funding. Um, and so the rescue council, through, through their body, which is a, I guess, a democratic organization with representatives from each of the 10 rescue squads, plus the marine rescue team is a separate entity, a separate organization. They came together and, um, did a vote. They adopted a position statement endorsing the development of a compassionate EMS billing program. That position statement is available on their website. They, um, they funded half of a study with a consultant with EMS billing program, as, as did the city. Um, and I, the rescue council's support, I think it is important to note, was, was contingent. It was contingent on EM, compassionate EMS billing funds, um, remaining to be used for rescue squad expenses and EMS operational expenses and, and not being allocated throughout the city elsewhere. It was contingent on ensuring 100% full transparency, um, in the billing program and the administration of. It was contingent on the city helping do a communications campaign, um, to, to educate the public. And, and just contingent on, um, the responsible management of an EMS billing program with participation from the rescue council. And I think through this process, we've checked all those boxes. I, I, I will tell you, I'm extremely proud of staff. I'm extremely proud of, uh, President McCracken and, and my, our relationship and the ability and the fact that we're here having this conversation with you, um, the city department and the rescue squads, um, together supporting this.
Okay, please.
One final thing. I want to put a final point on it. Thank you for that answer. Um, just thinking about, and I'm thinking about Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, for example. I'm very familiar with their operations, but it's true for all of them. They buy their own ambulances through the, the, through funding that they raise. And, and they receive a zero interest loan from the city. And on one hand, it's fantastic that there are citizens who are organizing in that way and neighbors who are supporting their efforts by writing checks, you know, and responding to their mail, um, solicitations and neighbors supporting neighbors. I think, I think neighbors serving neighbors, I think that's one of those slogans even. There's a lot of value in that, that goes beyond the life saving services, community connectedness and all that. For example, Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, they have, um, craft fairs throughout the year, um, too, that I've, of fall and spring for sure, maybe more. And just to put a bottom line, you're not going to pay for an ambulance organizing craft fairs. And it just to think about, it'd be like asking our fire department to volunteer to raise money to buy fire trucks. But it's, it's, it's complicated because the, the rescue squads take pride in ownership and the fact that they do raise those funds and, and that is, is purposeful. And, you know, it's, it's an important aspect that we don't want to, we don't want to take that from them and we certainly appreciate it. You're not going to pay for an ambulance doing craft fairs or community carnivals. Um, and yet, my personal opinion is that I think those community carnivals and craft fairs are good. I've been to them and you meet your neighbors and there's a lot of good things, you know? People are walking their dogs over there and, you know, buying volunteer rescue squad shirts. That's, I, I think that's good that they can continue to do that. But the compassionate billing will allow them to continue to do that, to contribute, but also to make sure there's ambulances on the street that run and are operational. And so that, um, in those critical moments when someone is experiencing cardiac arrest, there's quick response by an ambulance and an ambulance that's fully equipped.
Yes, sir. Um, and if I may, um, I mean, certainly I would agree. I, I think it's important to note out that, that if approved, as, as we're proposing, our EMS billing program, um, continues the ability for that pride in ownership. So it provides the funding directly to the rescue squads for them to be able to either, A, make loan payments back, back to you all for the generous interest free loans you've provided or to, um, save up to buy their own ambulance. So, so this does not, does not include any ownership of ambulances by the city. And, and that, that pride in ownership is extremely important to them. And, and they're working with us to try to increase some standardization there, which would be helpful as well. I think the other thing, I just want to take the opportunity, um, being opportunistic if I can, the, the interest free loans. No, I'm not going to ask for anything, but the, the, the interest free loans that you provide for, for, for them to buy ambulances have, have been a lifeblood to them. You are going to see some additional requests coming and even in the next year or two. And that may be confusing to you because if you approve compassionate billing, you may say, well, wait a minute. I thought this is why we did this. That fund has to build over time to, it be able to have the balance to buy ambulances outright. However, any fun, any interest free ambulance loan request that come to you during kind of that, that transitional period comes with a caveat, they have the ability to repay it from an EMS billing program if approved. I just didn't want that to get confusing when you see those requests.
Hey, Stacy, Josh and Barbara.
Thank you, Chief.
What are we doing to ensure that the compassionate billing, um, system is ready to operate on day one so that we don't lose revenue?
Yes, sir. Um, that's one of my biggest sources of stress right now. So, so a couple of things we've done, because of that December 10th, um, the, the sitting council at that time, the, the resolution they passed authorizing us to move forward with pre-work, if you will. We've partnered with an EMS billing company already. That partnership, it, we, we took the opportunity to look at various municipal contracts that included cooperative language or ride on language for us to pair. We, we got what we believe to be an excellent rate. But we also did that with the right language that allows an off ramp should council decide not to approve compassionate billing. But what that allows us to do is, um, to start the pre-work. So there's a big credentialing process. We have to do staff training. We have to change the way we do some documentation, et cetera. That, that billing company tells us it's typically a 60 day process to get people stood up. I, I'll be honest with you, I'm thinking more 90 to, um, to give myself a little more time. Everybody knows that we have to be, if you approve, we have to be up and operational July 1 because our budget is contingent on that. But I, I don't believe that we'll have any issue meeting that, um, if adopted, May 13th, I think is when you vote on the budget. Because of the pre-work we're being able to do now. The other thing is, once we, if you were to approve and, and, and that approval would, would make billing effective July 1 because it would be ordinance in your package, um, we would submit our credentialing application on July 1. Like everything would be ready. But what that allows us to do is we can hold the runs that occur, what? Because that can be a several month process for the government, the Medicare to approve your credentialing. You're able to hold all your runs that occurred during that time from the point of submission to approval. And, and then once you get approved, kind of turn them in for back billing. So, so we won't lose that revenue.
Same thing with insurance companies?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Hey, Josh and Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Stroud. Thank you for, um, the presentation. And I really enjoyed over the last couple of years, attending your functions and, and, um, getting to meet career and volunteer members of BB Rescue. And, and also just seeing what tremendous faith that, um, that the workforce and the volunteers have in you and your leadership. And I wanted to make sure to say that, um, and, and, um, and I wanted to say thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, can you remind us what the cost of an ambulance is and what the lead time is? And I know those ambulances don't come outfitted, so there's additional costs associated with getting them ready to go.
Yes, sir. So based on our recent experiences, if you remember, if you recall, um, city council was gracious enough to provide funds for five ambulances because we kind of had a really urgent need and, and, and we had immediate availability, which, which those just came, I actually got an email today, that first one showed up. The typical lead time recently has been well, well over a year and up to two years. Um, and that cost for, for a new ambulance of the style that our city uses ranges from 350 to 375,000 dollars. To outfit a brand new one, which means we have to also add the cardiac monitor, the power stretcher and all the, the accoutrements, if you will, you're, you're well north of half a million dollars, more than $550,000 in ambulance.
Thank you for that reminder. And, and as far as compassionate billing goes, I, I appreciate these talking points so that we can help communicate with our constituents when they have questions. One that I often use is, um, you know, if, you know, we, we get to kind of set the parameters, obviously, for, um, you know, for, for the, for the compassionate billing program. But, but also if, if someone is, has insurance with coverage that, that would pay for an ambulance and we're not charging, we're just basically leaving money on the table and helping insurance companies get richer. Right? So, and I don't know why anybody would want to do that. So I, I think that's probably one of the more compelling arguments you can make when you're talking about this.
Yeah, yes, sir. It's part of the premiums we all pay. Um, I've, I've had questions related to this. Ambulance transports costs are less than 1% of all healthcare costs nationally. And, and I've had questions and I think some of you have, you know, well, if we start billing, will our insurance costs go up? Well, we don't bill and they go up every year. I mean, it's not, not billing isn't stopping them from going up. So I think that's immaterial and the fact that it's less than 1% of cost, you know, should have no impact.
Thank you.
Hey, Barbara.
I tried to explain cash, compassionate billing at my last forum and I didn't do a very good job. So I really appreciate these talking points and I'll just get with you individually on some of the questions before my next forum, so I can clean up some of the mess I made, maybe.
Certainly, and I'd love to join you, um, if, if, if you'd like to have me.
All right, we'll see how it goes and whether I understand it or not. But we got something in our packet last week that bothers me. And I've, since EMS is involved in this, it says staff report that starts saying, this week we received notice from the Center for Disease, Disease Control that the federal grant supporting the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health's Aging in Place Program was terminated effective immediately. And this aging in place is focused on fall and lifts assist and nearly all clients are elderly. That really disturbs me and it does go on to say that you all were working on this to try to find. But there is no way in the world, I mean, these, when we lose these grants, especially effective immediately, it's going to come to the local government to. especially effective immediately, it's going to come to the local government to fill in the gap.
Yes, ma'am.
There's no way in the world we cannot respond to these calls. So what are we doing? What are you thinking about this program?
Yes, ma'am. What you're speaking to refers to the Aging in Place program that was a unique partnership with the fire department, EMS, health department, under Dr. Chandler's leadership. And I'm pleased to report that, well, it is unfortunate that that federal funding was shut off. I'm pleased to report that today. I signed my portion of a new MOU where that program's going to be funded through the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Foundation. Yes, I'm getting the nods, I said it right. So they're picking up the funding to carry that program through 2026.
Okay, so we're on top of this, and we're not going to have people who are not covered by this.
Yes, ma'am. We, I believe we are able to avoid any sort of gap in the program.
Constantly, it does lead to uncertainty for the future of the program, because those funds that the foundation was saving up, it was saving up to continue the program above and beyond when the city's fire and rescue plan at financing went away. So now, all of a sudden, they have to tap into their own resources quicker and sooner, so now they have to come up with a more robust philanthropic effort to get additional funds to continue the program beyond the original planned date.
Well, it's going to have to be made up someplace, and I'm just afraid this is just one of many we're going to be looking at, and it's going to come to the local government to fill in these gaps.
Well, and I'd be remiss if I didn't also remind myself, part of the compassionate EMS billing program, part of our plan for the programmatic use of the funds includes funds for mobile integrated healthcare and community paramedicine, which provides staff funding for the positions that are actually staffing the aging in place. So, I mean, for all practical purposes, the approval of compassionate EMS billing program is one way to ensure the sustainment of that program.
We will need to follow these things. Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else?
You know, Chief, I just want to say, as being a healthcare professional for four and a half decades, it's been a while, and interacting with EMS over many years, you know what you folks do? You save lives. That's what you do, and you do it very well. And you go into the most difficult and challenging situations where people's lives are on the line, and you bring a quality of life to people. If I could just say real briefly, a number of years ago, I was treating a gentleman in his young 40s, and he had a partial paralysis, but what happened was he went into cardiac arrest, and they worked on him for over 22 minutes, which was an exceptional amount of time, and they brought him back. And the amazing thing is, he had 12 children in his family, and his wife had the name of every EMS and every fire personnel that was in the room that saved this guy, written and kept in her wallet. So I tell you what, you know, kudos to, you know, the fire and EMS that work so much to save lives the way you folks do. And even now with, you know, the police, with the defibrillators and everything, we have a magnificent, magnificent, you know, public safety team right here in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
No, thank you, and certainly, I do have a great team, both support staff and uniform staff, and truly, they're the ones out there doing that every day. We continue to have cardiac arrest survival reunions at an increasing frequency, and those are undoubtedly due to the efforts of our City of Heroes, as you dub it, with the CPR instructions being given by Jada's folks, the Chief Nudigates folks showing up with the AEDs, Chief Pravitz folks being embedded in the community and getting there quickly and initiating advanced life support care, and then EMS folks, you know, rounding out that complement. It all comes together to provide that.
Thanks, it's a team.
Great work. Kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, this one, council comments.
Okay, let me kick it off a little bit as an addendum to, you know, Chief Judge Felton. She came, you know, just last week, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Rocky Holcomb, Monica Karowski, and LJ Hanson met with three judges. And there is a emergent situation going on. You know, one of the things that we say, that a lot of our buildings are aging, you know, as our building one aged, and that's why we're here. But the bottom line, it really comes down to that our courts are not ADA compliant at all. If they have a judge or an employee or a juror that is not ambulatory, they have to bring them in through the loading dock. The elevators are not functional, they're putting in the escalator, but that's going to take a while to get in November, I think.
Yeah, November, ma'am.
Until November. And the thing is, they basically wore it out, because so many people were taking it. You had a situation where you had a full elevator, you know, this was not Diller's, okay? And it was a full elevator all the time, and the thing basically wore out. The elevator to get inmates to the courts, you know, at times not operational. The two other main elevators are not functional. The judge's bench is not ADA compliant, accommodating ADA jurors. So the point is, as we look forward, you know, and we play chess not checkers with our budget, once again, this is a major concern for a lot of reasons. And Patrick, if my understanding, they have a similar situation in Richmond, where the judges actually issue an order.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But once again, this is another one of the challenges of an aging city. Rosemary, would you like to comment on that?
I'll just, you covered it so well, Mr. Mayor, but I think the judges realize that we are listening and how important we realize that this is, but some of the fixes are not easy fixes. I mean, fortunately, we funded the $10 million escalator several, two or three years ago, and it was, had to take the roof off to put it in place, but it'll be ready next November. The elevators are so old that they're having trouble getting parts for them. I do believe the judge's elevator is going to be ready in November, and they're working on a plan to get, one of the judges, it's really interesting, you are a lot of this, and I bet Hutch understands a lot of this from what he does, but for every inch you have to go up, you need a foot or a ramp. And the judge's benches have to be 21 inches up above everyone else. So that means the ramp has to be 21 feet long. And if you've been in those courtrooms, they're narrow, there's not a lot of space to do that, or if you have a turn, it adds another five feet to what the ramp has to be. So there's a lot of engineering difficulties that they're trying to work through, and but the staff is on it, and I think the judges received it very well, and they realized how important, we know that their justice is not cheap, that we've got to do this, but there will be something in the reconciliation concerning this, and we're changing the title, and this was one of the things that Monica brought up, not just to call it modernization, because this is really critical needs of the building. So you'll be seeing something along these lines in the reconciliation.
And, you know, one of the things they brought up, I think there were only two major elevator companies in Hampton Roads these days, so there are supply, a chain of supply, but also, you know, just getting on the docket with all the needs that are going on. So I just, you know, we just wanted to alert you to, you know, the situation. Any other council comments? Cash, and then Michael.
This past weekend, I went down to the Oceanfront, and Food Network was there. So Virginia Beach, once again, was on national television, and Tyler Florence was there. And so I was grateful, they had the event she crab soup. Different restaurants had tents set up, and so there was taste testing, there was a large atmosphere, they had food trucks. And so this goes to show that Virginia Beach is, has been on the map, and now we're on the map even more. So with that being said, I just want to give a special shout-out to beach events. What a great coordination, what a great event. And so I was grateful to leave work, go there for lunch, and then go back to work.
There you go. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, following up on an oceanfront-related matter, I received a couple of calls this week in relation to some of the discussions that have been publicly made about resident parking at the Oceanfront. And, of course, we know there's a lot of Virginia Beach residents who don't live at the Oceanfront or near the Oceanfront, who would like to utilize the many entertainment, dining, recreational resources that are available to our visitors all year long, and we're going into the season when that activity, if you want to go to the beach, they want to go see concerts, they want to go out to eat, and I think that the community is expecting us to follow through on some of the plans that we have discussed around resident parking. And the Vice Mayor has been working on this, and Councilmember Remick is well aware. I think one of the options that seemed to be agreeable to the people I spoke to was the opt-in option. But anyway, I know there's a lot of logistics that need to be worked through on this, including our oceanfront, most of our oceanfront parking garages aren't, don't have attendance, so it's hard to monitor who's a resident and who's not a resident. So I know there are some logistical issues, but, you know, people who are, people who live, the people we serve, want to enjoy those things, and they pay for those parking amenities, and I think it's fair that they're discounted or free. And I think we need to figure out what our plan is.
I was supposed to bring some more scenarios, or so, can you update us on where all that is?
So when we briefed council on it, we sent a memo after the fact that said, we'll come back to council after budget with some suggested opportunities to effectuate that, you know, just to understand the fact that the Parking Enterprise Fund is a self-funded enterprise fund paid for by the fees and revenues that it collects. And we articulate to council that in order to do that, we might need to offset the reductions of residents with possibly an increase for other patrons as well. And council seemed to indicate a level of support in exploring that. Obviously, the devil's in the details, so we're working on scenarios to bring back the city council, and we're shooting for a post-budget kind of before you guys go on a recess timeframe.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and we're going to go with Josh, and then more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulate the 50 volunteers who joined Lynn Haven River Now and myself in organizing a water-based cleanup of Lake Bradford and Chick's Beach on the Saturday. And I took one of my daughters out there, we got out of a canoe and picked up, along with the volunteers, about 900 pounds of trash that was in the lake. That was something that we, as a city, weren't able to do, because none of that debris was really impeding the stormwater functionality of the lake. If it were, then we might have been able to get one of our own crews out there, but because we have thousands of lakes and ponds, we can't get to all of them unless that functionality is impaired. So partners like Lynn Haven River Now are extremely gracious and important, and in terms of, you know, assisting and organizing those types of cleanups. So it was, it was very successful, and I know everybody was happy.
More?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Just a question here going forward, because I think each of us have these flowers at our seats, and it's about elections are fundamental to democratic government. My question is, because the flower says that May 6, City Council will vote on whether to add the charter change, but is there a public hearing before, and is that when the public?
Next week.
Right. So the public should be invited to that?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
And Michael, if I can impose, you had the most successful shopping mall, probably in all of Hampton Roads, and last week, there was a magnificent event that Rosemary and some of, you know, attended, where the schools had schoolchildren of military people do artwork reflective of what it was like being a military. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor, and I couldn't attend the kickoff because of a conflict, but I did get a chance to see the show.
Yes.
And Lynn Haven Mall annually partners with our school division to present the art of being a military child, and it's artwork created by students from across the city and every school in Virginia Beach, and it's a really amazing exhibition that not only showcases the artistic talents and creative talents of the students who are there, but I think arguably more important is the experience that many families have of being military service members. And of course, we know from our, from being in this community, that it's not just the service member who serves, it's the entire family who serves. And I really want to applaud Lynn Haven Mall, which is thriving, it is the most successful mall, and the region continues to be successful, which is something we should always celebrate, but also for being a great community partner, and for uplifting and serving military families and children, and doing it through creative expression, which is a very special vehicle for, to communicate those experiences. And it's really great artwork. I would also say, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and others who were there, if you got a chance to see the tribute to the fallen Virginia Beach police officers that was located in the center court of Lynn Haven Mall, and that's just another example of the great partnership that Lynn Haven Mall continues to promote with the city of Virginia Beach and for and with our community. They're not only raising funds for the, for the family members of those officers, but they're compiling community messages to their surviving family members about our community's appreciation for their sacrifice.
Yeah, we've a lot to be proud of. Rosemary, did you have any comment about the event?
It was awesome, you know, it was just really wonderful, and it was featured on Channel 3, and to see so many of the commanding officers of the local bases were there, all the families. The military is a huge part of our community.
Okay, all right, moving on. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Personal matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237-1181, and that's counsel appointment, appointments for boards, commission, committee, authorities, agencies, and appointees who have a motion. So moved. Second. Okay.
Councilman Meloche?
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilman Reddlin?
Aye.
Councilman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson Green?
Aye.
Councilman Robyn?
Aye.
Councilman Ross Chingbaff?
Aye.
Councilman Ralph?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed and closed. Okay, we are recessing to close. I've called this back in. Do I have a motion to approve the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Henley?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green?
Aye.
Councilor Romet?
Aye.
Councilor Ralston?
Aye.
Councilor Ralph?
Aye.
Councilor Schulman?
Aye.
Senator Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Five of 11, 10 to 0, sorry. You could throw it by the closed session in accordance with the motion.